This is a meeting of the council for council time and specifically for a work session on a topic of interest to many, not just those with children who participate in sports, but to many who observe and participate in what is happening out at Harmony. So this is Wednesday, January 25, and we turn this over to staff for a presentation on Harmony.
Thank you, Chair. For the record, Rocky Houston, Parks and Land's Division Manager, and with me is David Stipe. Always concerned I get it too loud. David Stipe, who is our Planning and Development Manager for our division. And the audience, of course, is Ken Later, our Public Works Director. Today, we plan to do a brief history of the site, a brief history of this project, review where we're at today, and ask a few questions in regards to some policy direction to make sure we're still meeting the original intent of the project and hitting the things that we need to do at this site. Next slide, please. So this property, and there were a few acquisitions, but the one where the Harmony Sports Complex is located, was purchased in the 1940s with road funds. It was originally intended to be a burrow or gravel pit to meet our road operations, is my understanding. And in 1955, you can kind of see its agrarian perspective that it was in back then. We began in 1982 with a lease with the Harmony Sports Association, which started out with a little league and then a soccer organization to provide a location for organized athletics in the county. And that lease was just updated to meet some requirements for grant just at the end of last year through 2044. Seems like there's one little tidbit I should have remembered right now, but next slide. So this is just some aerial photos kind of showing how it's changed through the years. So 1982, we started that lease for some sports. You can see in 1990, and it's a little hard to see, but still you can see the baseball diamonds appearing there, a little parking lot to the south, and some sort of fields where some soccer was starting to be played. Move forward 15 years to 2005, you see some little buildings starting to show out there, bigger parking lot, a little bit more defined, a little bit more development. Next slide, please. And changing the perspective, but here is aerial from 2021 and where it kind of is today in that it's now in city limits, so it's no longer in the county. The 18th, which is on the, I guess, my right-hand side, hopefully that's your right-hand side of the aerial photo, is the city boundary. And 192nd is that road that kind of goes below. And it has a fully developed gravel parking lot that swallows cars this time of year and creates dust when it is dry here for a few months. It's got developed artificial turf fields, three of those, in that sort of southwestern corner of the property, and lots of soccer use and baseball around there. So it's a, I think in our pros plan, it was identified as one of our heavily-used county park assets and continues to meet the needs. Of course, the community's grown up around it and continues to grow and move from that agrarian perspective into rural residential and now into suburban and urban environment. Next slide. So back in 2017, 2018, when we applied for a grant and received it, the original scope was to improve the access. So 13th Street, where the left little crayon drawing is there, is where it enters, and the idea was to line, thank you, I always miss the laser pointers for these things, is to allow connection and a light there to move traffic. If you're out there, especially on the weekends and games are being let out and starting, it gets very congested. And even just with normal operations right now, there's a key commercial use to the south, Costco and Home Depot and lots of that, that does generate a lot of traffic through this area. So the original perspective was to improve the safety and that access and to pave about 200 parking stalls. We got a 1.1 roughly grant from the Department of Commerce, and we'd committed $600,000 in REIT II funding to help with this project. Next slide, please. So fast forward through all the things that we were just talking about during the Health Department, COVID and things, the project went through a lot of things. And when I arrived here in 2021, this was sort of the scope. It had come back to council for review. We'd gone through some planning issues. So the city of Vancouver identified a transportation need to bisect the property, extend 13th Street up to 187th, which isn't there today, but to create that flow, and some other issues. And so through that, we'd come to council and asked for a change in the budget and the scope, which included a $3.7 million project, about $2.6 million coming from REIT II funds to do this sort of a mini master plan here for site planning to kind of have our lessee have that plan. And we were looking to do Phase 1. And Phase 1 was A and B parts. So there was a core parking, and potentially it appeared back then with our cost estimate that 1B, which additional parking would be allowed to be funded with the funds we had available. So we moved forward with our 30% and 60% design. When we got to our 60% design, we identified that, next slide, please, that the project had ballooned. We have supply chain issues and identified that now that 3.7 project to meet that was going to be around $7 million, maybe a little bit older, over. And it appears that every day we wait, it seems like that number keeps going up in regards to a lot of our capital projects. So when we met as a team to try to identify, is there funding available and do we want to make that level of investment? Do we want to change the scope? We identified that the city had received a grant to make some improvements on 192nd, and some of those costs that we were potentially going to have to do to improve 196th and second in front of our property could be part of that road project. And looking at that, as when I came on, looking at that history, identified that the original scope was here, it grew for whatever reasons, and there were complications. And so looking, how could we get the project back into sort of our budget of about $3.7 million and what that would look like? Next slide, please. And with that, this is our, some work that we had done last fall to identify that essentially to kind of get it close, it's going to require around $200,000 for additional engineering and permitting to get the bid packets ready, because we've used some of that contract to do these other elements that were sort of known unknowns that we had to address. And so this will allow us to do about 200 parking stalls, very similar to that original, and some additional gravel to improve. In addition, there's the plan set and the work for stormwater and that future phasing of the parking lot to bring it to pavement. So those elements would be addressed to help our partner meet those in the future. Alternatively, there would be increase in funds to fully actualize and address the dust and the parking issues to try to meet that need. Of course, by doing that, then that removes funding for other projects across our system. And so that's always the balance that we're looking at. Next slide. So we've met with the state to determine, we've already extended this grant once to see if we could extend it again. They identified that that is a potential. They cannot make a commitment until their budget is approved, which would probably be May or June, and then that before they could actually make sure that there's funding to do that. So that's still an element out there that we're working through. And we're working with the consultant to kind of determine, I guess we're waiting to get that policy direction to change the contract, to add that extra $200-plus thousand to have a complete project, and making sure the scope that we're looking at now is still consistent where council wants to go. And just as a tangential, as I'd referenced 187th extension earlier, our neighbor is looking at some development there, some apartment and housing and such to the west of this property. And as such, that does require, per city's transportation planning, that extension of 187th, and that'll be an ongoing dialogue we have within the department and come back to council to look at resolving that issue as well. Next slide. And that might be it. So what staff is proposing is to reduce the scope back closer to where it was originally, try to keep that budget constrained as much as we can. Once we get to 90 and 100%, we still may have a price increase, but try not to have a project go from about $1.7 million to $7 million. But, yes. So I'm available for any questions and comments at this time.
Questions from council?
Madam Chair, I have questions right away for Rocky.
Go ahead, Counselor.
So I appreciate that we have this work session, and the pandemic really threw a wrench into a lot of this progress that we thought we were making back in 2019. But I'm a little confused, and I want to make sure we can differentiate what we're talking about here, because I see it as major impediments, you know, between the city's development of First Street and the fringe area, and you mentioned the development along 187th. The biggest monkey wrench that got thrown into this plan a couple of years ago was the city's intent to push 13th Street through, which was going to not only completely destroy the integrity of this great facility, but it was also going to increase safety issues for children and parents by bisecting that property. You mentioned it in a few slides ago, but I understood that that issue was resolved and that Vancouver had agreed they would not put 13th Street through. So the 187th right-of-way is a totally different issue. I just want to confirm that first and foremost, that this isn't an issue that's now coming to roost again with different city council members and planners in Vancouver, but we did put that to rest.
Counselor, yes, the 13th Street bissection or extension is not part of the city's plan, so that is accurate. And this is just another element as additional development occurs out there that triggers that transportation plans, review, and implementation of a different road.
Okay, and I want to ask one related question, because especially for the new counselors. I mean, this is a model partnership with all the sport nonprofits and organizations that focus on fundraising, developing the site themselves with great visionary ideas. Have you kept them up? Do they have any current, it's been a while since they've done a presentation to us. I'm assuming that they're in accord with where we're at today, because again, I point to them all the time, hey, you should do what's happening at Harmony, because it's a powerful private-public partnership. And having had four kids grow up in competitive soccer, I mean, it's near dear to my heart to pass through that area when it is full of parents and kids enjoying life and improving their life. So I want to see this development to continue. I'd like to get rid of the dust storms from the parking lot and alleviate that exit and entrance, which is very problematic, especially when they're doing these tournaments. So anyway, are you keeping them, are there any objections or concerns that they have that you're aware of?
So Counselor, the HSA, they've identified a core member, his name's Charlie, who's been sort of leading this project from when he was on the board to now continue to work in this. And so we have quite a few conversations, and as we've gone through these things, they've been at the table as we've worked with our consultant and through these issues, and have been really integral in having other conversations with neighbors and other funders to try to do things. So of course, I think they would like to have it fully complete, and they can move on to the other elements they're trying to implement. So since the last couple of years, I think this last month, as part of that planning effort, they installed additional lighting to improve the use of the baseball fields. They have a grant they applied for and received, I believe, for another artificial turf field. They have another building that they're looking to get erected. So they've got a lot of things, as well as we identified through this process that we have a well out there that we've been using for irrigation, but we don't have the correct rights for the amount of water that's being used for irrigation. And so they actually were working with neighbors and identifying water rights to be able to continue that irrigation and are funding that through that. And there were some, definitely some nonprofit opportunities there to work to kind of do those things, instead of us connecting to the city water, which not only would create an additional cost for the project, but then there's an annual water bill. And so that's an additional cost that they would have to be paid, which is, all nonprofits, you know, things are usually pre-razor thin. So I think we're not always as timely as they would like us to be, but have been patient with us and continue to advocate for this project to move forward and figure out how to get it to be as, spread the dollar as wide as it can be, given our constraints.
Thank you.
Are there questions?
Yes, I have some questions, kind of, they're going to be a little bit broad and not necessarily applicable to this project, but this is within city limits, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I know that we have a memorandum of understanding for parks that, with the city. I know that the city owns a couple of parks that are in county jurisdiction, and I'm just curious about, I mean, this facility definitely benefits the city. Does the city contribute in any way financially to this?
It's my understanding that it's a county asset, most of the operational costs are being handled by the lessee or lessor, I got that word wrong, the tenant in regards to doing those things. So our, most of those are our costs. That doesn't mean that the city isn't a good partner in working with them on a lot of things, so I'm sure there are some other benefits and issues the city is helping them with, so specifically.
Yeah, it kind of tends to get a little bit weird sometimes, you know, and that negotiating factor, I just think we should keep that in mind, especially when conversation of annexation comes forward. But if I could, I would love to get, when you have available, I'm struggling to understand the cost, both the cost to begin with and the increase. So I'm curious if we could get like a line item, not, I mean, just, I'm sure there's things that you guys are doing that you haven't mentioned here, and I'd love to see those. And then my last question is centered around, you had mentioned that the city was requiring some lighting improvements, some of the city or street light improvements.
So when I spoke about lighting specifically, it was about field lighting and a project that this sort of mini master plan for the site allowed them to implement with the city permit. But actually, on the city road or the street, 192nd, there is street improvements, which includes, you're correct, street lighting, a pathway or sidewalk, turn lanes, those sort of improvements, as well as making sure that our alignment, you know, it was part of the work we were trying to do is making sure that future work at 13th and the future work that we knew they were going to do on 192nd, that everything was aligned correctly and met their standards, so that we didn't have to have them undo work we just did. And that's part of our argument for putting some of the road improvement work into the city project again, is to make sure that we're not spending a dollar twice.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. And so was there anything, any increased costs that we've had due to that, or is it just kind of changing things a little bit?
It's a combination. So I think there are, once we got to the 60%, 70% level of design and review for the city, the city had requirements, and so there are costs for some of those. And I think more of it is, it's just the cost for materials and labor has just continued to go up significantly, and that supply chain are where those are, we continue to see that. And this isn't the only project. We have several projects where, you know, you just had that open-mouth moment when you see the next cost estimate. We have another project where we've made refinements to get it within our budget, and we get the next cost estimate, and we're over budget again. And so it's a challenging time for public works projects.
Being in construction, I'm completely aware of that experience firsthand. I was just kind of, from your conversation, it sounds like that's not the case, but it sounded almost like the development that we were doing here was triggering some road upgrades because of that. Is that what's happening?
It is true. And I don't have the level of detail in those original cost estimates and scoping to determine if that was fully vetted in that original $1.7 million project. And so there probably are some things there that weren't thought of initially, and so there are some of that additional element, you know, for what it appears to be attributed to is just the change in the amount of parking stalls and pavement that we're looking to do, which triggers different permitting requirements, which triggers more work there in costs, just the increase in actual costs of things. And then as Counselor Mavendi had referenced earlier, is that we had these other things that we were spending money and time on over the last few years to get it to where we could actually get it close to construction now. And some of those are some other requirements.
Okay, I appreciate that. It's just something I'm curious about, and I know that the, you know, working with our partners, the city, is a delicate balance, so appreciate your comments.
Rocky, just for clarification, though, we have a handful of parks that are within the city's geographical area. We don't have MOUs with the city regarding management of the parks that's solely under the county, correct?
That is my understanding, and I believe it's a combination of a few things. So the Greater Clark Park District is a boundary level and those different park improvement facilities and the type of parks they are. So for example, Frenchman's Bar is within city limits, but it's a regional park, and so it doesn't meet that sort of classification. And so that's a county asset that we continue to manage. This specific parcel was acquired with road funds, and so it creates uniqueness for us in future management. So it's, if it was general fund or Greater Clark Park District, and I'm probably wrong legally, but we could kind of transfer it over and have the city manage it within city limits. But because it is road funds, we need to make sure that those dollars continue to be, follow that, so there's not one fund benefiting from another. And so I know we've had discussions about management and other things at this site and on other sites, and so those continue to be conversations that we have, and I'm sure others in the county have with the city.
Chair, I have a few questions.
Counselor Marshall?
Thank you. So if I'm understanding this right, this project will expand the number of parking spaces from the original gravel parking?
It won't expand the number of parking, it will have paved parking stalls and improve the entrances to where we'll have a stoplight and a controlled northern access to where you can't turn left, which creates some of the backup.
So the parking footprint is about the same? More or less?
Yes.
That's close enough?
Yes. The full build-out and the plan would increase that footprint, but in the, what we're looking to do in phase previously at the $7 million or in our revised number would still be pretty much within the same footprint.
Right. And I'm curious about the, what's happening on 192nd with those road improvements. Is there public transportation along there? Would there be bicycle lanes or things that would make the park more accessible?
Good question, Counselor. The default answer is it will meet city's guidelines, but specifically, I believe there are some bike lane and like a center turn lane elements, and some of those, those elements are part of it to make it safer. The actual transit line, I'm not 100% confident on whether or not there is a line that goes through there right now or not. I'd have to follow up on that.
Great. And imagine with the stormwater treatment that you'll be under the city's requirements to meet their stormwater?
Yes.
Okay. And the other thing, just listening to this, if this were to be built now, this facility, it would be a requirement that it's paved, is that correct?
Yes, it's my understanding that the city and many cities in Washington don't allow gravel parking lots, so there would have to be a paved parking lot if it was built today.
Great. And just related to water rights, just to get water rights, I know if you can figure that out, I know some farmers that would be interested in how to do that.
As do I.
And just to comment on the whole thing, I would want us to be able to access that $1.1 million, and that further delay is probably just not going to be helpful in any way, and that this seems to me to be something that's been needed for quite a while.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments from council? Questions from council? And hearing none, I believe that this session, council work session, is concluded. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Rocky.
Madam Chair, did we satisfy Rocky with the policy direction? I'm seeing quizzical looks. I mean, I want to say first and foremost, I've been hot and heavy on supporting this for the last four years, and I just want to make sure you're on track with the organizations that are actually using it, and that we have deconflicted with Vancouver planners that have had plans in place for 20 years in this area, and now it's coming to fruition with the HP development and First Street. I mean, there's a lot happening in this area that we need to make sure we're on track with. So I support what you're doing. Obviously, these are, it was sticker shock when I saw those inflationary new revised estimates. It is what it is. I'm hoping you can keep those costs down as much as feasible, but I would like to continue to move forward. You know, our REIT funds are becoming more healthy, all of our fund balances are healthy right now. Now's a good time to move forward before costs continue to increase, and we need to solve the problem there. I mean, it's a traffic nightmare, and most times when it's operational, and they get heavy use in Harmony. I mean, again, it's a model agreement. I'm hoping that as the city grows and incorporates more, that we can do better or change our MOUs. I mean, I'd like to see, I wasn't aware of the water issue until you just mentioned it, so thanks for mentioning that. Boy, I'd sure like to see the city mitigate that, either with the connection with their utility, getting it on city water at a reasonable cost to the users. I'm hoping that we can solve that situation.
David? This is David Stipe, the record Planning and Development Manager. I would ask the specific question for clarity. If the council wishes the Parks and Land Division to move forward with the staff recommendation of rightsizing the project or continuing forward with the project as it's currently scoped and designed at 60%, which is the larger project?
Right-size? What you meant, are you referring to the takeback on the budget that you had mentioned earlier, or what specifically?
So we have 60% design drawings for the larger $7 million project, seven-plus-million-dollar project. Staff recommendation is to bring it back into the $3.3 million project with the smaller Staff recommendation is to bring it back into the $3.3 million project with the smaller parking lot and the re-gravel of a portion of the current dirt slash gravel parking lot. So staff's recommendation is to, what we're calling rightsize the project, bring it back into the $3.3 million budget.
How much of the 60% will be lost by going back to the original concept?
We would be losing about 400 paved parking stalls.
Oh, no, I apologize. I mean, if the costs associated with rightsizing the project is the $200,000.
Four million.
The $200,000 design fee supplement. So we're incurring an additional $200,000. We won't lose any of the, well, we won't lose any of the underlying work because it'll exist for future projects. There's just some retooling that has to take place of the plans and specifications to develop a smaller phase. So we'll have basically Phase 1A, 1B, 1C, as opposed to just 1A.
Okay, so the long-term intention is still to move forward with the larger design, but we're kind of taking it in bite-sized chunks? Is that my, is that correct?
Sort of.
It's, Counselor Young, I apologize for interrupting you when you're asking your question. It's currently not in the six-year parched capital plan to do another phase of work at this, at this site. That doesn't mean that it wouldn't show up in next year's version of the capital improvement plan, but I doubt it, given all of the other things that we're facing with the other developed properties and undeveloped properties that we have. So this could be the only improvement to the site for six to 10 years, to give you
And to clarify, we have a lease that puts those development responsibilities on our tenant, not on the county, and this was a situation where they came to us to do the project. It's, it has a lot of, it's been more complicated than it was really elevated, and we've tried to make sure we're still making it whole through the process and make that investment because of its value to the community. And so in the future, we'd be looking to the tenant to go after grants and other funding sources, which they have done historically, you know, and I think they've put three or four million dollars plus into it that I'm aware of in the last few years. So they've got this plan, and we've set them up for success, we hope, in having that site plan, those phases, those elements, to help them be successful in getting those additional funds and implementing those projects.
My understanding is that you are asking to go back to a smaller number of parking spaces, and I'm not understanding the database for your wishing to do that. Specifically, when I get communication from constituents on Harmony, it tends to be along the lines of concern about the left turn into the complex, concern about the maintenance of the potholes that are, that are on the facility, and the lack of parking spaces. So why is there a desire to, from a data perspective, to decrease the number?
Counselor Chair, this is Rocky. So the, it's the level of development that we're looking to change on those parking stalls to, instead of having them being paved, to keep them remaining as gravel. The access improvements for safety, having that additional stoplight and main entrance, and improving the current entrance to reduce that left-hand turn will, are all components of this. The core element is to keep it within our current budget element, is to return to the original scope of 200 paved parking lots instead of the 600 or so parking, paved parking lots that it had grown to over the last couple of years. And if, because of the other capital needs for our park system countywide, that's why we came to you, is looking at that significant increase in budget, is if that was still, the direction council likes to go, is increase that budget to meet that larger, more paved, to meet some of those dust issues and those other, other issues. That is, is an option, and that's, that's the kind of policy level we're looking at from you to help us.
I'm sorry. Are only a third of the parking lots utilized now? Parking spaces, I'm sorry, utilized now?
That's a great question. You know, I think during the weekend, during season, when there's a lot of games going on, they become, all the, all the spaces are used to capacity, and when they have tournaments, of course, it's overcapacity. So that's my understanding of the use.
Exactly, being 600, correct?
I, I believe there's roughly right now about somewhere between 500 to 600 gravel parking stalls in there roughly. And we could go back a couple slides to, I'm a visual person, so.
Yeah, if we could go to Slide 8, that actually has the staff recommendations on there, and from, I think what I heard in the presentation and what's stated on here is that this, we're still going to be working with the city to look at road improvements, which may include the left turn lane. Is that correct?
We will make sure that the left turn lane and the light are still part of the project, whether we're paying for it or the city's paying for part of that. We want to, that's still a core element that will remain in our proposal. The red elements there that are seeing were things that were in our Phase 1A previous scope, and some of those we're, believe that can, either the city will pay or we won't be able to do. So the parking lot that's below the little blue, blue area would not be expanded, so that wouldn't be completed. We'd have all the engineering for it and the stormwater elements for future work. And with the blue is referencing additional gravel, so the core, the biggest issue with winter use is where that blue is, and so making sure that that current parking lot is as usable as possible. The parking lot to the north that isn't showing up here is currently gravel, and it was done later, so it has some dry wells, better gravel base, other things that make it more usable, and maybe a tad less dusty. But again, by taking those core entrances and exits to pavement and that core circulation, again, we're able to bifurcate the gravel, i.e. some of the dust is still going to be dusty if we were to implement this, but it's, it's setting it up in phases to do as much as we can within that fiscally constrained limit that we have now, and trying to move it forward for future success.
And Steph, if you could just go to the top of that, in the box, it actually says return the project to resemble the original scope. So this was the original scope that council had supported moving forward, and the scope has grown and, so this is really going back to what was approved, what can we do now, understanding the city has a role to play in their jurisdiction and that they will be making improvements to the roads as well.
This is one of those issues where we're kind of getting lost in a vacuum because of lack of continuity over the years. So as to Counselor Young's point, I want to just clarify that by rightsizing this, we're not going to lose money that we've already committed to this project, or if we are, what is that amount? I mean, we, the other two big moving pieces here, we've talked around and hit the main points, working with the city. And also what we're missing, and Counselor Chair, Chair Bowerman, I believe you were on the council at the time when the tenants came in and showed us their fundraising efforts, their vision for development, for additional venues, for stadium. All of these things, pieces fit together by the work of the public works that they're doing. So we're not precluding that future development, maybe Phase 2 or Phase 3, in doing these parking lots to work around an incredibly successful tenant that is able to fundraise and build to their vision within our footprint of the property that the county owns. So just the one clarification, by rightsizing it, are we throwing money out the window that we've already expended?
I think, I think the work has already been done, which is, so it's already been spent. What I'm understanding from the staff is it's not all lost in that we're going to lose that money, it's just, it's going to be pushed out over a longer period of time, and if it's five, 10 years out, we may need to review it to make sure that it still meets the same specs that we're looking at.
So we're not wasting money by this change? I mean, that's, it's going to be useful down the road.
Yes.
I got a couple more quick questions. Sorry to drag this on, but have we approached the city and asked them if they would consider being supportive in the project? And financially?
So we've not asked that specific question financially. What we have asked is a different way of asking that, is we've met on-site with their public works staff about the road project and what could be included in their road project versus part of our project. It seems how they have that other project currently going on, and they may be ahead of us or right behind us. So that's a roundabout way of asking that. So we've not asked for dollars, but we've tried to figure out what could be put into the road project.
Counselor Young, if I might add to Rocky's comments to your question, they've been a partner on the project, coming up with creative ways to postpone certain frontage improvements until they're ready to do them, talking about what parts of the development on the property would trigger things that they might get around to at a later date. They've been a great partner with 187th on making sure that the extension of 187th, when the property to the west gets developed, doesn't have an impact on the fields because right-of-way acquisition would have. So they've been a really good partner, and Rocky did mention earlier that they did get a grant for some frontage improvements. So we're seeking ways to partner with them.
And then my next question comes back to, from my understanding of Vancouver City Code, it is not allowed to park on an unimproved surface, even if it's like a grandfathered situation, if it were, if there were a complaint. I know their enforcement is complaint-driven, so I'm concerned, and do we, by not completing the project, do we risk having code enforcement come in and say we can't use those gravel parking spaces?
Counselor Young, I don't know the answer to that. My, my understanding through our consultant and the pre-application meetings and such is that they're aware of the gravel status in the phasing, so I don't, I've not heard that there was a concern about some sort of code enforcement if we don't fully pave it all.
I don't know if, maybe you, I think it would be worth just double, triple checking on that.
Well, and I would further say that if this is the county park, it falls under our code, right? I think we need to look at that because there are, the city has annexed previously and have not taken the park, so it remains the full authority under the county.
Okay.
But I think that's something we can look at with the different parks rather than trying to.
Yeah, and yes, we'll follow up on that specificity. You're right, asking three or four times and making sure we've got it in writing will definitely help us. Nothing worse than the 11th hour being whoops.
Counselor Young, the last time we met with representatives from the city on the site, and we were talking about scaling back the paved surfacing and re-graveling some areas, while they might not be from the enforcement arm of the city, they were receptive to the idea of doing some minimal regrading of the parking lots and resurfacing with gravel as a stopgap measure, for lack of a better term, with regards to dust and potholes that eat small cars in the winter. So it does get us into sort of a gray area when it comes to stormwater, and that's another conversation that we had, is at what point do our re-graveling efforts kick us into a sort of another level of stormwater improvement? And that sort of echoes my comments earlier about them being a really good partner on this, is just trying to find a way to make something move forward so we increase safety at the site and user enjoyment, so.
Thank you. I would, I would say that if we check all these little things and everything looks good, that, I mean, I'd be supportive of moving forward with a scaled-down version.
So I think you have two votes, although we don't vote at these work sessions. Madam Chair, were you giving a thumbs up to the?
No, I was not. Are you, are you Counselor Medveji?
I'm sorry, I missed your question.
Are you giving it the thumbs up, Counselor Medveji?
Yeah, so I gave my thumbs up right at the beginning, and I'm looking forward, and if we do have conversations with the city where they're going to start code enforcement on our gravel parking lot, then we need to start talking to them about them paving it.
I would be supportive of the scaled-back version, knowing that, you know, there'll be phases going forward in the future, and related to the gravel, it'll be some, it'll be part of your maintenance plan in whatever years until we might get to the phase where everything gets paved, so that'll be important. But I appreciate your working so well with the city, and if you could express our gratitude to the tenants for all of the efforts that they put in to this site, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
You too.
I think you have your three thumbs up. From my perspective, I'm uncomfortable with the extent to which answers are available right now, and I can feel the need for further exploration of what is the consequence of going back to that original scope that we really don't have right now, and I could see the need for a little bit of time actually improving our answer to that, but that's just my personal perspective for not giving a thumbs up. Any other comments from staff? Or from council?
I would just like to, again, thank everyone for your, for your input in helping us move this project forward. I appreciate your time today.
And is there anything else from council? So hearing nothing, I believe at this time, the staff questions are answered, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And so we are ready to bring this work session to a close, and frankly, I look forward to hearing more in the near future on how this is progressing, so thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your time again.
We now move in.